Good evening and welcome to Milltown's Candidates Forum for 2019. Make sure you watch a Milltown Channel 15 and on YouTube, thanks to David Potter. Tonight's candidates are Anna Newbauer and Phil Zambrana Jr. on the Democratic side, and Dorian Kerber, an incumbent councilwoman, and Kyle Livingston on the Republican side. Anna Newbauer is a 16-year resident of Milltown. She is currently a member of the Board of Health in the Cable TV Committee. Previously, she has volunteered five years with the Milltown Rescue Squad, where she served one year as the Correspondence Secretary, and then served as Crew Chief for several months toward the end of her service. Anna works at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital as a data analyst, and she has been working there for almost 10 years. At the hospital, she's involved with the Emerging Leaders Group, and she is currently a co-chair of AWARE, a resource group focusing on the empowerment of women in the workplace. Anna attended Our Lady of Lourdes in Milltown from kindergarten until she transferred to Joyce Kilmer in the 7th grade. After graduating from Spotswood High School, she earned a Liberal Arts Associate's degree from Middlesex County College. She is currently enrolled in a Bachelor's Program at Rutgers University for Business Administration. Anna resides with her husband Joe and their two dogs, Nala and Ego, on Washington Avenue. Her family still lives in her childhood home in town. Outside of work, school, and community involvement, she enjoys drawing, reading, and spending time with friends. Anna?
Hi, good evening, everyone. First, I just want to thank all the volunteers who made tonight's event possible, and for all of you who are here or watching from home, for making an effort to learn about your local candidates. This event is crucial in allowing everyone to make informed choices while voting. As Jen mentioned, my name is Anna Newbauer, and I'm running for council. I am here tonight to ask for your vote, not just for me, but for my running mate, Phil Zambrana, and for our running mate, Trina Jensen-Mayer. You have already heard, but I have lived in Milltown for 16 years, so this community is a big part of my life. I want to give back by making improvements while preserving our values and the unique qualities of our town. To do this, I believe that the decisions made about Milltown and its residents should meet three criteria. First, they should be fiscally responsible. They should be clear and transparent, and they should include as much resident input as possible. If these criteria had been used in some of the more polarizing decisions over the past few years, I believe that Milltown would have far less residents frustrated with the current state of affairs. The people I have had the privilege to speak to while going door-to-door love Milltown, but feel, despite recent increases in tax and utility rates, that there has been little priority placed on projects that have huge impacts on the quality of life in town, such as our water infrastructure. On the other hand, these decision-making criteria are easy for me to make, thanks to my personal values as well as my current position. As a data analyst, my job involves collecting and aggregating data from multiple sources, and to present it in a way that allows my department to make the best decision possible when it comes to an issue. Using this process ensures that a decision is made in good faith with strong evidence backing it. Moreover, after my time with the Rescue Squad, I have learned a variety of skills that enhance my leadership and team skills, and it would be very beneficial to use on the council. On an emergency call, your crew members differing opinions or bad attitudes should not have any impact on how you function as a team. Communication and involvement from all parts of your team allow for an intelligent and fair decision to be made, no matter what situation you're in. If elected, I will use the skills I have acquired so that I can make educated decisions that have a positive impact in Milltown. I ask that on Election Day, on November 5th, you give me your vote, and that you encourage your friends and family to vote as well. This year's election has never been more important to Milltown, as deciding how we move forward as a community. Thank you.
Phil Zambrana Jr. has lived in Milltown for the past 15 years with his wife Andrea and two daughters, Kayla, 22, and Mia, 18. Phil is currently employed as a business manager with the Human Genetics Institute of New Jersey for Rutgers University, which is located on Bush Campus in Piscataway. Previously, Phil was employed as a research contract grant specialist with the Office of Research and Sponsored Programs for the university, where his client portfolio included various departments within the Rutgers Biological Health Sciences Group, as well as the Center for Alcohol Studies Group. Prior to that, Phil was the Assistant Business Manager for the Rutgers University School of Social Work, located on the College Avenue Campus in New Brunswick, from 2010 to 2015. Prior to joining Rutgers University, Phil spent 10 years working at several startup companies in New York, in the media About.com, college sports, CSTV, and Sirius Satellite Radio for Lime Radio Spaces, where he was an integral part of the financial team for those operations. Phil was born and raised in Queens, New York, and graduated from Baruch College with a degree in finance. Phil served as a member of the Milltown Board of Education from 2011 to 2016, and for the last three years of his term, served as Chair of the Finance and Facilities Committee and as a liaison to the Spotswood Board of Education. At the present time, Phil is a member of the Milltown Planning Board, Milltown Environmental Commission, Milltown Board of Health, and the Milltown Fourth of July Committee. In his spare time, Phil is an ardent sports enthusiast who enjoys following all of the tri-state area sports teams, and spending time with family and friends. Phil?
Thank you. Good evening, friends and neighbors who are here tonight at Borough Hall, or who are watching us on Channel 15 or on YouTube. Two years ago, I sat here in Borough Hall explaining why I was running for council. At that time, the three issues that concerned me were accountability, transparency, and communication. So the communication issue has improved due to the relaunching and redesign of the Borough website, and we still have a ways to go on the issue of transparency and accountability. One new issue that surfaced since 2017 is how the leadership of this town is going to move forward. I've been a resident of Milltown for about 15 years, and I moved here because my family and I have the same core values as the values that I find in this town and what makes Milltown famous for. Those core values included being involved in your local house of worship, being involved in your local community, and helping folks wherever you could. Jennifer said I work as a business manager for the Human Genetics Institute on Bush Campus. I also serve on a few committees in town, and the best thing about that is I've made some lifelong friends from joining those committees. As a business manager, I manage a wide variety of clients, both internal and external, to the university, and my job is to ensure that the budget that we put together, we stick to that budget, and we hit the goals, so that the university meets its goals overall. I oversee a budget of about $27 million, and that's actualized on a quarterly basis with re-forecasts every quarter until we get to the end of the year. So taxes are always a concern to anyone in this part of the country, but in New Jersey, which Milltown is a part of, it goes way beyond that. As we all know, taxes became a bigger concern last year in 2018, when the amount of taxes that a resident could write off on their taxes was capped. That change is important, especially for anyone in town, and there are many people in this town that pay over $10,000 a year in taxes. We all know that Milltown does not have as many ratables as East Brunswick, or North Brunswick, or New Brunswick has, and that's what makes it more important for us to be more prudent with the financial commitments that we make, because in simple terms, if there's a shortfall in the overall budget of Milltown, then that shortfall is going to be made up by the residents of the town. In 2016, my opponent promised to work to protect our quality of life, to hold the line on taxes, and to keep Milltown a safe place to raise a family. She committed to moving Milltown forward. If you fast-forward three years later, ask yourself, what has she accomplished for you over the last three years? To improve your quality of life and to improve your hold the line on taxes. Ford Avenue and 350 housing units are coming. There's a tax assessment that's coming. It's a time for leadership, a change in leadership. Thank you.
Incumbent Councilwoman Dorian Kerber is an entrepreneur. She's married with one rescue dog and has been a resident for more than 16 years. She was elected to the council in 2014. She was the Chair from 2017 to 2019 in Department of Public Works, 2016 Chair of the Utility Department, 2015 Chair of the Environmental Health and Social Services, and Chair 2014 of Parks and Recreation Department. She's been a volunteer with the Middlesex County Water Resources Association, Board Secretary from 2015 to 2020, Middlesex County Transportation Coordinating Committee from 2016 to 2019, Middlesex County Health and Wellness Council, co-chair from 2014 to 16, and a board member from 2017 to 2019. She's also a board member of the Lower Raritan Watership Partnership from 2019 to 20. For the Jersey Water Works statewide organization, she attended the One Water Summit this past September from the 18th to the 20th. The committees from Jersey Water Works that she's on include Green Infrastructure, Municipal Education and Outreach Finance Committee, and Combined Sewer Overflow, Rutgers Green Infrastructure Champion for Middlesex County, Food Waste Program Champion for Middlesex County, East Brunswick Sustainable Jersey Task Force, and she is supportive of county programs and enjoys being a team player with these organizations. Some of her accomplishments include the Complete Streets Policy and Resolution to apply for a Complete Streets Grant through Sustainable Jersey, which was awarded in 2018 by the NJTPA for Tactical Urbanism Lighter, Quicker, and Cheaper Guidance, and a collaboration with the Milltown Police Department, DPW, and the community to create a Complete Streets Demonstration Project, which was implemented by Middlesex County this past May on Main Street, both at Church Street and Ford Avenue. The Streets Smart Campaign in May of 2018 with the Police Department, DPW, Borough Staff, Mr. Siegel, and the 7th Grade Class assisted the team in local business establishments for educational outreach. She helped establish an NJ Clean Communities Cleanup once or twice per year with Public Works. In 2017, a town went cleanup and planting throughout the borough, including using donations from the Milltown Revitalization Committee. The Streets Smart Campaign in May 2018 with Keep Middlesex Moving had received a Bronze Level Safe Places to Work in 2018 and 2019. Barbara Wright, and Chief Now, conducted Bike Safety Plus Safe Roots to School programs, which she had submitted reports on their behalf to receive Bronze Level in 2019 Safe Roots to School Award from KMM for Milltown. Dorian?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight, and I thank those who are in attendance and who will be watching the forum. Serving two terms, I've been able to network with various people within Milltown, as well as outside agencies, to make a difference. I'm running for a third term, along with my running mate Kyle Livingston and Councilman Ravelinski for mayor, on working to do more programs and outreach to our community. I have persevered to introduce several projects and programs, and this is a collaboration between the community, also with our borough staff, in order to implement these programs. This has improved the lives of those who live, work, and play in Milltown with those projects. These include, as was mentioned, the Complete Streets, Streets Smart Campaign, but also the installation of rain gardens to capture and infiltrate stormwater runoff to reduce flooding. It also captures pollutants. We've done this at Parkview, Joyce Kilmer, Mill Palm Park. We also have the Mayor's Wellness Walk coming up, and some of these have been done through grants or collaborations with outside agencies, and now I do have a team of support for grant writing. Many people in town are passionate about preservation, beautifying our town, and working toward common goals. We need to continue working on improving and sharing information to increase outreach and awareness. We need to create campaigns for future planning with all committees, commissions, the school district, residents, nonprofits, and businesses, to work together to continue improvements, as suggested by the governor, with shared services with other towns. We have begun the process, but we need to expand the process. As a councilperson, I enjoy working with people to build long-term relationships, and have introduced outreach programs, which have been appreciated. I'm proud to have introduced to the seniors various partners to work on improving the outside area at the senior center. And also, I introduced a program and is now continuing with the Hackensack Meridian Health with the seniors about health programs in terms of diseases, ways to improve their health, or programs that they can work with them on. We need to reach out to the community to create teamwork to oversee some beautification projects that we have implemented, also to accomplish more in Milltown. I have seen other towns in New Jersey and throughout the nation who form such a strong alliance with experts, nonprofits, volunteers, businesses, the community, and they have created a more enjoyable downtown plus pedestrian safety with their collaboration, which allows for an increased business area. With your support this November, I can continue my commitment to moving Milltown in the right direction of preserving the past and bringing us in some new areas to present with improved lighting, beautification, support, and our staff for future improvements. Thank you.
Kyle Livingston is a lifelong resident of Milltown, an Eagle Scout from Milltown's Troop 33, and a graduate of St. Joseph High School. After high school, Kyle attended York College of Pennsylvania and Rutgers Law School. Today, he has a practicing attorney licensed in New Jersey and Pennsylvania. He is currently employed as staff counsel to a national insurance carrier. He is a member of the Middlesex County Bar Association and the Milltown Green Team. Kyle and his fiancee Lucy purchased their first home here in Milltown in 2018. Kyle?
Thank you. Good evening. First, I would like to start off by thanking the members of our community who came to participate in today's forum, either remotely or in person. Your participation in our town's democratic process helps keep Milltown the greatest little town in the land. Recent world events, particularly in Hong Kong, have made me greatly appreciate such participation in local government, and the importance of elected officials remaining responsive to their constituents and the needs of their communities. I stand here today, ready to hold our own government accountable to its citizens, albeit here in our small town. As a lifelong resident of Milltown, I am well aware of our town's strengths, our family-friendly culture, our schools, and our affordability. Those same values are what made me and my fiancee choose to stay in Milltown and build our future here. However, I've spoken with many of you. I'm all too aware of the concerns our residents have regarding the rising cost of taxes and utilities and the crumbling state of our infrastructure. I share those concerns too, and that's why I'm running for town council. Having said that, I don't have a magic wand that will lower our taxes, but what I can promise is that it will work hard to keep costs down while making the difficult choices required to keep this town great. In recent decades, our town was governed by short-term thinking. The council treated the utility surpluses like a piggy bank and failed to reinvest those funds in our water and sewer system. Instead, those funds were used to delay tax increases and fund pet projects to help win reelections. Now, we suffer from brown tap water and a crumbling Forest Main. If elected, I promise to support the following. Reinvest every penny of our utility surplus in the repairs and improvements in those systems. Retaining a grant writer on commission to raise funds for borough programs in a revenue-positive manner. And utilize state grants and funding to study the possibility of shared services with our neighboring towns. Our town needs vision, not platitudes, to ensure its independence going forward. I have the knowledge, I have the vision, I just need your support to make it happen. Vote for me for election on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you to all the candidates. Now, we have Kathy Chang from the Sentinel and Susan Lawyer from the Home News Tribune, who will be asking questions of you as well. Susan?
Kathy's gonna...
Kathy?
This is for all the candidates. What uniquely qualifies you to be the best candidate to serve on the council?
Anna, would you like to start?
Sure, absolutely. So I think I covered a lot of that in my introduction, but just to reiterate what I've said, I take an approach when making a decision that includes a lot of research, a lot of making sure everything's in the right place, and also making sure that all of the costs that are going to be associated with the decisions are acceptable. I don't want to put another tax burden on the residents of town without having the research to back it up showing that we need to spend the money. We do have a lot of things in town that we do need to spend money on, though, because we have our water infrastructure. It is very old. It's been on the strategic plan for Milltown since 2009, and it just has not been addressed yet. I feel like it would be a priority for this to be done in the upcoming future. That's why I appreciate things that some of the council members, such as Trina Mayer's currently doing. She went and spoke to the county. She's trying to get money to help us improve our water infrastructure. I just want to see more of that in the council. I want to see more reaching out to different places and also innovative ways of fixing things.
Thank you. Kyle?
Thank you. I believe I'm uniquely qualified for the position of Borough Councilman, due to my legal experience. As a lawyer, I'm often required to deal with different experts and groups in a variety of fields, whether that's in environmental law, in my work as an environmental law attorney, whether it's with engineers in my experience as a construction defect attorney. I'm often called to step outside my wheelhouse and interact with people who are experts in other fields, and I feel that regardless of where I am positioned within the departments, if I was to be elected, I believe that I would be able to tackle it better than...well, I'll just say I could tackle it great. Thank you.
Dorian?
Yes. I feel that I'm qualified due to the two terms that I've served. I have done a lot of relationship building. There are things coming down the pipeline in the next few weeks, few months, that will enhance our town, that we could also apply for grants. In addition, collaborate and work with the other agencies within the county and outside of the county, other organizations, to bring Milltown in further working with whether it's water infrastructure or anything else that we need to accomplish in this area. We have roadways, we have other areas that we need to be addressed, and that collaboration between the county, our borough staff, and other agencies will be able to help us to assess things and evaluate things, so we can make more improved decisions.
So, infrastructure's a big topic in this town. I think another issue in town is just taking care of the little things. Just last night, at last night's council meeting, we heard from two council members where they said they repeatedly hear from residents who are wondering what's going on with code enforcement around town. From the get-go, I would think I'd look at the Code Enforcement Office and see why is it that things aren't being taken care of in a manly fashion. I'm going to return your emails and your telephone calls. And another topic that came up at last night's Borough Council meeting, the county is there as a source of funding, I'll say, and they've reached out to Milltown to kind of help us with our infrastructure needs. Not really sure why that hasn't happened in the past, but just to continue to build on that, based on our relationships amongst the various committees in town, that's why I think that differentiates me from everyone else. Thank you.
Can we have the next question, please?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. If elected or re-elected to the council, what departments or committees do you believe you are best suited to serve on, and why?
Kyle?
Thank you. I believe that my best-suited position would be in public safety. I believe that I have a good relationship with the members of our police force and our Rescue Squad, our fire department, who, by the way, I would like to congratulate the Rescue Squad and the Fire Department for their recent award wins that we heard about last night at the council meeting. In addition, I believe my legal knowledge would also help. I have experience in constitutional law through my programs at Rutgers Law School, and I believe I'd be well-suited for the task. Thank you.
Yeah?
Most definitely, in the finance area. It's kind of what I do on a daily basis. There's a lot of costs that are fixed. When I was on the school board for five years, when you actually are elected to office, you think that you can actually save everyone, and then you look in and you see that 80% of your costs are fixed, and you've got to figure out what to do with the rest, with the 20% budget that you have left. But again, I do this for a living on a daily basis with a lot of moving parts. That's really the one area that I think that I could bring my expertise to.
Dorian?
Currently, I've been on the public works for three years, and I'm very comfortable with that. However, I've been on various other committees, and I think I could do well on any of the committees. There's a lot of changes taking place in terms of programs to be offered, like in recreation, we can look at that as a way of how everything is going, whatever needs to be changed could be changed. But public works, I have a very good relationship with the county, with the community and the staff, so I've worked well in that area as well. So either way, even environmental, it wouldn't matter, because I work well with people, and I'm a people person, and whatever needs to be accomplished in that department, I'll continue to work and assist in that manner.
Anna?
So, I think that I would probably prefer to do something that I'm more comfortable with, like public safety, since I was on the squad for so many years, but I also like to try new things and use the skills that I have when I'm trying those things. So I would have to choose utilities. I think that we have a lot of improvements that are coming down the line that we're going to need to make, and to do that, we're going to need to do a lot of research to make the decisions we're going to have to make. And I feel that my position and my experiences have really set me up in a way that I could really make an impact in that department.
Thank you. Can we have the next question, please?
If elected or re-elected, how would you deal with the current state of water, sewer, and electric utilities in the borough?
Dorian?
If re-elected, I would certainly make sure we have a full assessment and evaluation from our professionals to make the best possible decision on where to go and planning. There are some crucial things we need to handle. However, we need the input from our staff, our professionals, and also from our residents, what's going on in their areas of town, to categorize a plan to know what to do and implement priorities, and that's how we need to work with the water, sewer, and utility. Also, whatever needs to be repaired, replaced, lighting, poles, various other things. And of course, as things come and happen with water main breaks, we will address them as they happen. Hopefully, we would have a plan to know which ones need to be addressed, possibly with this communication database and keeping a database, and that's very important, to keep that running information available.
Yeah?
So, that's a good question. First, I would determine if our water and our sewer rate reserves are adequate enough. Again, just at last night's meeting, the question was asked from a resident, like what the 2019 water and sewer rates are, and the answer from our BA was that, well, we're still working on it, but they may go up as high as 10% because of some issues, some adjustments that went back to 2018. So, you know, we're at the tail end of 2019 now. We've known for a while that, you know, New Brunswick is having some sort of billing issues, but you really have to get your reserves into place. You want to have sufficient reserves. If you don't have sufficient reserves, then all you're going to do is raise rates in order to make sure that the maintenance that needs to go into place for infrastructure like ours that's over 100 years old is taken care of. Other than that, I would just, again, work. Do the work. I'm all about the work, not about the show. Thank you.
Kyle?
Thank you. I believe our primary focus should first be redirecting the surpluses that were being taken out of the utility funds and keeping them in this coming budget. Second, I would then use those funds in addition to any other available grants due to the state's allocation of resources towards tackling lead pollution to explore where our town's needs are. Right now, from what I understand, it's the Forest Main. That's the big long-term project we need to tackle. If we do not tackle that, we'd be facing much longer-term costs that could easily be avoided if we tackled this now and not wait till later. Every Band-Aid we put on that bullet wound will only deepen the expenses. Second, I would look into the regionalization of the water, but my time is up, so I will yield.
Anna?
So I think that we have a lot of work to do with our water infrastructure specifically. We have to make some improvements that have been put off for far too long. It was originally in the strategic plan in 2009, and now we are going to be facing these... And now we are going to be facing these little Band-Aids every single time a break happens. These, the most recent break cost $500,000 to everyone. We had to actually go back and increase the budget, the reserve in the budget for the water utilities to be able to pay for that. This is something that should have been a priority years ago, and we do have to deal with it now. I would love to see if we were able to find the funds, either from state funds or from bringing the reserves back, actually like Kyle said, to reinstate the project of replacing water lines, street by street, when we can.
Other than utilities, what do you consider the biggest issue facing the borough and how would you address it?
That one's easy. I think the biggest issue facing the borough right now is communication. I think that we all have a hard time getting to meetings or checking online to see even when the meetings are. I just feel there needs to be a better way of getting people to the meetings and getting the meetings out there to people. I think that we could use some improvements on how we take notes so that we can make sure that people that maybe can't sit and watch an hour-long video on YouTube can just review the notes and get the important facts. I would love to see more use of the NICSIL. And even ideas such as simple as if we can reconfigure the bills that are being sent out or any other literature that we're sending out on the back of it, you could probably fit a couple, hey, these are your next couple of meeting dates. So communication is something, a big deal, and there are definitely ways to fix it.
Yes, I would agree. Communication has improved somewhat. However, if people do not sign up for all the notifications online or NICSIL, they're not going to receive the information. So I'd love to see the television expand to VIOS because we have a mix of crew, cablevision and VIOS. In terms of the communication, we need to also hold some more public meetings instead of all these, you know, certain committee meetings. It should just be broadened and present on a bigger campaign of reaching out like other towns have done. They use, of course, Instagram and all the others. We don't have that capability. However, we need to find other ways to really communicate bigger and louder, to expand our communication. This will bring in more information, give us more ideas, create more planning, and accomplish the goals of the town with their input. Thank you.
I think the biggest issue tackling this town, other than utilities, would be general issues with social cohesion, and specifically with our children. We have a very family-friendly town. However, like other towns in our region, there's still an ongoing opioid crisis that while for the most part we've been able to weather, still remains an issue. Additionally, traditional means of community groups, community activities is decreasing. Kids are playing video games. They're not going out to play in the parks. That's fine. We just have to adapt with the times. We've been doing a very good job of that, particularly at the school board level, with the anti-bullying programs and the outreach with the police force, but I think that should continue further.
Susan, could you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. Other than utilities, what do you consider the biggest issue facing the borough and how would you address it?
Well, I don't think there's really anything bigger than the utilities, but I'll try to answer that the best I can. Just more collaboration between everyone, you know? It's a small town. It's 1.6 miles circumference. You don't really have to make a, a big effort to get to know everyone. You just have to make the effort. And if you get enough people involved, you know, my problem is I don't know how to say no. That's why I end up on all these committees. But if you start to talk to people and you start to see what they think and what the things that are like, that they're dealing with in their day-to-day lives, and you bring people together more, town hall meetings would, would be a much better thing. That's probably the best way to go. I mean, communication at the borough has improved because of the, the relaunch and redesign of the website. I'd like to see actually resolutions posted so that folks aren't just looking off of an agenda. If elected, that's something I would look forward to, to doing. So you would actually know what's being voted on in detail. Thank you.
As a councilperson, how would you attempt to increase ratables in the borough?
That's a great question. Milltown is pretty much developed at this point. There is a project that is going on right now on Ryder's Lane. I'm on the planning board. There's another piece of property where the old spirits, Package Goods Store used to be on Main Street. And then there's another parcel of land across the tree from the firehouse on Main Street. It's probably also going to be developed. I would think that as these parcels of land are discussed for development, that we wouldn't be handing out twenty-year abatements because that kind of defeats the purpose. If, if you're going to, I understand bringing businesses into town is, is, is important, but you also can't give out twenty-year abatements to, to folks. So then, again, the cost of the, 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 the lack of funding in the town is borne by the, by the residents of Milltown.
As had already been stated, we're a very small town with very little open space left to develop. That's a, both a positive and a negative. What I would say is that we need to focus on keeping the businesses we do have in town. And by doing that, we need to increase the reliability and sustainability of our infrastructure as well as keeping and maintaining our taxes at their current level, if not lower if possible.
I think that Milltown, current, you can't hear, sorry. I think that Milltown, to get more ratables in town, is going to be a bit of a balancing act. We do want more ratables in town to help take the tax burden off of our residents. But we also want to make sure, like Phil said, not give another abatement. I think that there are other ways that we can become more business-friendly in Milltown. There are way, programs that a community can set up for different things that a business might be able to use, different programs to give to the businesses and ways to make them increase their professional development for their staff. Professional development often leads to retaining staff. And I think that there's a lot of opportunity for the town to install programs that would help these businesses.
Yes, again, unfortunately, we are limited. However, we do have some developments in place and future developments coming down the pipeline for increased ratables. We need to really focus on, and of course, I know the borough staff is improving on signage and painting, making our town even safer. And more complete streets implementation because that what brings a bit more businesses to our town. And keeping them here on Main Street. We have to look and review it, the utilities, rates, and so forth. And hopefully, with all that, we can work to either maintain and hopefully listen to the businesses and see what they can do as input so we can tailor or adjust things and system in any way we can. I think that's important.
Thank you to Susan and Kathy for your questions. Now we're going to take some questions that were submitted by the people who are in the audience. The first question is, with various proposals from the state urging the sharing of services and even combination of school districts, would you stand up for Milltown's independence while continuing the common sense shared service agreements that are already in place?
Yes, I most certainly would, and I would love to expand shared services amongst the community, part of, you know, the school board, as well as neighboring towns. And we have currently one with East Brunswick, and I'd love to expand on that. This is the way, and this is the future. It's, it's what North Carolina, it's what everybody has done throughout the nation already. And they have flourished and they have brought back businesses. They have brought back a more improved community and quality of life. It, it's a combination of green infrastructure, greenscapes, walking paths. It's just improved, but the Middlesex Greenway a lot have greenways in their estates or in their other towns in the state of New Jersey as well, and it has improved. So this mindset, we need to expand on our greenscapes and such. And I think that's what's going to help bring back more businesses and keep flourishing and improve things overall.
I won't comment with regard to the school board because that's the purview of the school board. However, I believe that we are at a crossroads. And whether we consolidate or share services by choice or whether we wait until the state makes us do it, it's going to happen. I believe we should regional, regionalize our services and consolidate our services where we find it acceptable and where we find it beneficial to our residents, either because it saves money and also maintains the same level of services we enjoy. We have a great staff here at the Borough Ball. Particularly, yesterday was bulk pickup. We had it at the Department of Public Works coming around. We need to maintain that, but we might be able to do it for cheaper. We may be able to do it with more equipment from another town. If that's the case, I'm, I'm on board.
So we already have a few shared services agreements or relationships with other towns. South River is one where we have electrical line help. East Brunswick will come through and they'll, they'll clean our, our streets with their sweet, their sweet sweeper. We also buy gas and fuel from East Brunswick at a lower price than we would ourselves. As a small town, as Kyle said, we're, we're at a crossroads. We have to share more with our neighboring towns. That doesn't mean that you lose your identity as Milltown. It, it doesn't mean that one half of Milltown becomes North Brunswick and the other half becomes East Brunswick. It just means sharing more services. And if it makes sense to save the town money and still keeping your identity, I'm all for it.
I'm sorry about that. I'm getting a little drier up here than I thought I would. Should have brought a water bottle. I think that we, we should really focus on the shared services that we already have and try to expand those. I know, like Phil said, we work with South River for electricians. When we don't have the staff to be able to handle that, and I think that there are other opportunities within the municipal services that we can do that. I would love to see a service shared for cutting trees back when we need to. If we don't have the manpower to do it, it's something that's getting a little overgrown and we want to protect our power lines. I know for a fact that the different emergency services in towns already have some, we call them mutually aid instead of shared services. We use North Brunswick and East Brunswick if we can't, if we don't have enough people to go out on a call or if we're already out on a call. I've actually heard recently that there's been an uptick in medical calls in the town. So I would love to see more shared services such as that.
When faced with difficult financial decisions similar to that of the water rates, what would you do and how would you approach the situation?
One thing we've done in the past is have finance committees and discuss things with the auditor to review what is available and how we can handle things. And know what's coming through from New Brunswick and cost-wise. And that's, our professionals really help us and guide us as much as possible in terms of making decisions, whether they're challenging or decisions that we don't always have positive outcomes. And that's why some of the decisions, decisions that were made have been made. It's not to sock it to anyone. It's, we're not trying to make things higher rates of things because we just want to do that. There's shortfalls. There's things that need to be met and, and meet. And in order to keep us stable, sometimes it's unfortunate, but we have to do things in that manner as a leader.
I think that when we faced that utility rate increase two years in a row, a lot of people were really taken aback. They weren't prepared to see such a large increase over such, over such a short amount of time. I think this really leads back to our whole platform about communication and keeping people informed, keeping people informed that, hey, this might happen if these rates go up. And I think it also requires us to take a closer look at our priorities in town. The water infrastructure should have been a priority years ago. And we have effectively knocked out the reserve for the water utilities. And we need it more now than ever. So I think when making these sorts of decisions, we need to really prioritize and also do all of the research before making a decision.
When faced with difficult financial decisions similar to that of the water rates, what would you do and why, and how would you approach the situation?
The water and sewer rate situation took everybody by surprise. I can tell you going back ten years how often or what the rates were from New Brunswick to the town, but there weren't any increases for whatever reason. What I do know up until three years ago, there was a substantial surplus in the water and sewer reserves. I'm not even part of this council. I don't even look at all the financials. But just from the information that I asked for and I received from the Borough Clerk and, and the Finance Department, money was moved to put down on a project that, I'm not really sure if we needed that project. And that's why your reserves went down. So, when you, when you hit folks twice on, on a project that you don't know if you really need it because it's not a priority, because in reality, the priority has always been the water and sewer. A member of the planning board, it's been on the master plan for ten years. You just have to stick to the plan, follow through on, on the things that we're going to do, and everyone will be okay.
Thank you. I think proper foresight and attention to our finances would make events like those not be taken by surprise. To anybody who was paying attention, the sewer rates and the water rates hadn't been increased for years. They stagnated while money was taken from those funds for other projects. As I said, I'm going to reinvest the electric and utility funds back into their respective coffers. They're not going to be used for my pet projects. They're going to be used for the betterment and investment in the town's infrastructure. Additionally, communication is important. One, not only with the experts in finance and engineering who might be called upon to give us estimates into the state of our finances and how much things would cost, but with the community. I think a big portion of why that took everyone by surprise was because there was poor communication. People were blindsided because there was no forewarning. They got the bill and they were flabbergasted. Better communication will be used if I'm elected. Thank you.
What is your opinion on the importance of volunteers in the community?
I think volunteering is one of the greatest things one person can do for their community. As an aggregate, we have a town that has an amazing collection of volunteers, whether it's with our volunteer fire and rescue squad or with Milltown's Packing Troop Thirty-Three who help out all over town, or with our Fourth of July Committee. We have a small-town spirit that can be found in no other town around us. And that benefits the community as a whole, whether it's with our seniors or with improvements to public property. We're able to make that happen here, and I want to continue that.
Our volunteers, tears are just terrific. We have such a great community. They come out when necessary to help a family. In times of disaster, we're here for each other. It's a great community between our veterans, helping seniors out. We have troops that assist us with projects in, in town, with beautification projects, with cleanups. And it's just phenomenal between the Historical Society, our first responders, all the volunteering that they do, and they support each other. We come out to our Fourth of July, Milltown Day, excuse me, National Night Out, and we just have such camaraderie. People see each other. It's been a while, and it's just wonderful. It's been a while, and it's just wonderful that we have such a small community. And I know Mayor Cohen has been here on a couple of occasions just to see what it's like, and now he sees what it's like in Milltown as compared to East Brunswick. How wonderful a community we have.
Phil?
So, it's really understated about the value of the volunteers in this town, whether you're on the Fourth of July Committee. And, you know, I'd like to acknowledge the Milltown Historical Society for trying to preserve and make sure that the history of the town is preserved in some ways, shape or fashion. It's easy to join a committee. You just have to fill out a form. It's easy to volunteer. It's not a lot of time. You might make a lot of lifelong friends. And at the end of all, of all of it, everyone's having a conversation about how this can be changed, how this can be improved. But again, it's all in the spirit, as Kyle said, of a small-town feel. There's got to be a lot more of it. It makes the town run. It's what makes the town run. Thank you.
Anna?
I really appreciate the volunteer services we have here in our town. I think every volunteer service has been mentioned by everyone else up here so far. But I think that something that isn't realized is not everyone is volunteering. And I know that we have a huge community of volunteers here in town. I just think that if you have the time, please go out and volunteer. I know that the Rescue Squad and the Fire Department are constantly looking for new members. They provide training for you to earn certifications and to get experience, maybe even in something you might be interested in doing. And you get to give back to your community in a way that just can't be described by anything other than the greatest feeling that you can have. I know I'm supposed to be sort of speaking for myself up here, but I will say, please volunteer. If you can, please go down to the Fire Department, go down to the Rescue Squad, they have applications, and try to make the, I know that the Rescue Squad has part-time memberships or associate memberships for those who can't volunteer as often.
Thank you. What will you do to reach out to the public in the future? Kyle?
One of the best ways I've found to reach out to the public has been getting out there, going to meetings. Personally, I, when I've been campaigning, I've been handing out my own personal card with my cell phone number so people can contact me if they have any questions. I have an email address, kyle four milltown@gmail.com. You can email me at any time. I'll be happy to schedule a meeting or talk to you about any problems you have. Being involved, it's not a question of knowing what's going on. You're going to find out. And I'm happy to hear any feedback the residents have.
Phil?
I think that's already gotten a good start with the strategic planning that's been going on over the last year. Again, it's something that's been spearheaded by Councilwoman Mayor. Folks in town are given the opportunity to come to Borough Hall along with their fellow residents to discuss and prioritize the issues that affect everyone, and then to rank them to see, you know, what's a tier one, what's a tier two, what's a tier three, and what are we going to tackle over the next year or two. So, things like that, which are already, you know, off the drawing board and going ahead, need to continue. Continue to get all your information from the website, and I think everyone will be better off for it. Thank you.
Anna?
I have walked so much. I actually have passed my step goal for days and days in the past couple of months walking around and introducing myself to people. I actually didn't realize how many people I already knew in town. It might be a generational thing, but I also have been giving, both me and Phil have been giving out our personal cards when walking door to door, trying to communicate with people. And I always try to set realistic expectations, though. I try to tell people, hey, give me a call, send, drop me an email, and I will get back to you in 24 to 48 hours, I promise. I think it's a big part of, yes, we offer to communicate with people, it's just the follow-through with communicating with people. If you don't have that follow-through, if you don't respond to that email, it just takes one person being upset about it that everyone's going to start losing their trust in you. So it's about offering the communication, but also having the follow-through with it.
Dorian?
Yes. Currently, thank you Susan Lawyer and Kathy Chang, I send you my posts on events that are happening in Milltown, so I definitely use online newspapers or print in addition to your competitor, tapintoit.net. But I also post around town. It's important to get out there, and I think that's why some of the cleanups are successful and some of the events that we've held for Milltown. And other organizations have really done well. But we need to expand that communication. We also need to reach out to the community, give them the guidance to go on the notifications button so that they know when their bulk pickup is, non-metals, recycling schedule, as well as any other notifications from the Rec Department. Nixel, you don't have everybody signed up. A small, small group of people. I think it's under 500, or maybe now under 300 people. So that's just a small group, and we need to expand that. But also post here at Borough Hall and reach out to our Borough staff to make sure they reach out to the rest of the community.
This will be our last audience submitted question. What will you do if elected to get Milltown's finances in order? Phil?
There is no plan that I know of right now. There is a plan that's trying to be put in place by Councilwoman Mayor. Two years ago, when I was up here running for council, it was the same issue. I think if, again, you prioritize, you look at every single expense that's coming into town, look at your revenues, look at how much debt you're talking about, what's possible, what's not. And, you know, again, do it on a monthly basis. I don't know if the Borough actually looks at anything on a monthly basis. I don't know if they look at it on a quarterly basis. If elected, I'll make sure that it's looked at on a monthly basis and that everyone gets the information, not just on the Finance Committee, but every council person. Because the more people you have invested and the more people you have involved, the better off you're going to be. Everyone's got a different skillset, but just because it might not be financed doesn't mean that your recommendation or your question isn't going to be validated. Thank you.
Dorian?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure. What will you do if elected to get Milltown's finances in order?
In terms of getting that in order, we would have to definitely evaluate things and how they're done. And I would definitely want to increase the share of the services, further grants to also offset some of those costs, whatever we can do to accomplish that. It would be, of course, a joint effort. And it would be great to open it up to the full council, so we have a full discussion. You know, after we have our committee meetings on certain things like we do, then we would expand it further. And that's what needs to be accomplished. And then we would have some public meetings to accommodate those for the seniors, probably during the day instead of the evenings, and maybe an evening meeting. It doesn't have to be, you know, every week or every month, but once we've determined how things are, then we can reach out and expand it to the rest of the community. And I think that's, and the Borough staff as well.
Anna?
So I think that getting our town's finances under control is actually already being tackled by our new BA. I have noticed that she has really been holding people to task when it comes to the different financial decisions made in town and different projects that want to be started. She really seems to be on track. I think that the best way to get the town's finances in order is to support her and also support any decisions that have been fully researched and show either that every possible option for financing had been explored, and if not, that we absolutely 100% need whatever we're trying to spend money on.
Kyle?
I think we need to be more bullish on our capital improvement plans so that we don't have these large ticket expenses jumping out on us. Further, as I mentioned in my opening, I think we need to retain a grant writer who will work on commission for what they can bring into this town. As Councilman Kerber has demonstrated over the last two years, two years particularly, if you are smart, you look after those grants and you bring them in, you can get a lot of work done. Just look at the crosswalks on Main when it intersects with Ford and Church, because we have great new high-visibility crosswalks there now because of proper grant writing. If, grant writing's a skill. I know that because my fiance did it for a living. I know it's a very particular task, and if we're able to do that professionally, it's one of the few revenue-positive jobs we can bring to this town. So, that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much to our candidates, Anna Newbauer, Phil Zambranne, Dorian Kerber, and Kyle Livingston. We're now going to take a five-minute break, so please stay tuned to Channel 15, and we'll be back shortly. Thank you.